And then let me cut on to the rotation for the schedule. Uh, Manor Scholarship, we just, we started a scholarship, uh, a little over a year ago, two years ago, actually. And we just wanna make sure, we wanna continue with that. And the board agreed upon that, and then the school, um, was given that application. Um, myself, being the director, attended a Northeast Career Fair on February fifth, with all the nursing students from UNMC and, um, Northeast. And we were able to at least put our word out there a little bit, along with about fifty other people that are still looking for nursing. And then let's audit report, um, I, I don't know, uh, the copies aren't here yet, they usually give us a nice little binder book thing. Um, the Medicare cost report was just submitted last week. Uh, when those come in, I can give you a copy of that audit report. Um, basically, the only thing I've stated in there, as it is stated every year, is that we're a small financial organization, has a business office, and to make sure we're doing a lot of checks and balances in regards to that. And Bob has visited with me and the board in regards to additional things that he would like to be seen, just to guarantee that, uh, everything is on track. I'm sure my kid does an excellent job, uh, but, you know, does always balance the checks, so.
I do have a question, Julie.
Yep.
Um, here on your Planning Manor Board of Directors meeting, January thirty first, down at the bottom, you say Executive Session None, but up above, you went into Executive Session, can you clarify that for me, please?
That was an executive session that the Director of Nurse asked for Kim Walton to do, so that was brought up to the top of the agenda. I stepped out at that, that time. The bottom Executive Session would be our normal Executive Session.
Okay.
Um, and otherwise, you could call that a typo, I made it on my part, because at this time, I'm still doing the minutes.
Okay. And I think Bob discussed with the board about having a secretary do the minutes, and you more conduct the meeting, is that correct?
He has, and we have to re-discuss it next meeting for the fact that some discussion was had on that. And, yeah, I don't know, it's a lot right now, I understand, and the bylaws and understanding them. I'm happy to give it up, I, it don't bother me one bit, but they are also a little nervous on understanding how to do minutes accurately.
Okay.
We'll figure it out, yeah, we'll figure it out next week.
Yeah, next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably should, 'cause you went forty-eight minutes without you being there, so who was recording those secretary minutes? Uh, on the December twenty-seventh meeting?
Oh, yeah, when she left early.
Yeah.
That was the board, I left the board, I did have Christmas that night, and I asked for the excuse, so.
Okay.
I'm just saying that if you were the secretary, it doesn't say anything, that somebody took over as recording secretary. Just a little thing, little thing.
Yeah.
Hey, everybody. So, January is a pretty slow month, I can say that 'cause of all the weather. Um, if you look at my report that I gave to you guys, it's kinda messed up, and that's my fault, because I'm not a Excel guru. I had Courtney show me how to do that, so next month, it'll be different, you'll be able to read it a little bit more accurately. Um, you can see our traffic stops were a little bit on the low side, but that's just because of the weather. Not many people were out and about. Um, do you have any questions about that before I move on to other things that I got going on? Okay, so, good news is I've got a grant total for, um, fifteen thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. I was approved for, uh, grant for computers, grant for, not body worn, um. Help me out, Andrew.
Computer.
I said that, computers and in-car cameras.
In-car.
There you go, and then I asked Region Eleven for a grant for gun locks for both vehicles, and they awarded us with that. So, it's closer to sixteen thousand that I'll get reimbursed for, for all of our equipment. Um, so, our stray dog ordinance policy, we're kind of at a crux, just like Pierce PD, Osmond PD, Pierce Vet has shut their doors, so when we get stray dog calls, we got no place to take them right now. It happened a lot sooner than what we had anticipated. I figured I'd have probably until April to get something rolling where we can all get together and figure out what we're gonna do with these stray dogs. 'Cause we do, I think we probably had ten last year. Pierce had a few more than that, and Osmond maybe had four, but we still have to have someplace to take them. So, um, the state sent me a packet, and I'll go over it with Jeremy. I showed it to Courtney, um, basically, if we were to take on a kennel, what it would entail. Um, I talked to the vet today, Chris, out at the, out at the clinic here, and he said he would be more than welcome. And he'd be more than happy to do vaccinations if we needed to, however, they wanna get paid upfront, because when they had it before, that's what they fell into a problem, and we're not getting paid for it. Said, well, we can incorporate that with boarding, boarding fees and registration fees, we could say, if you want your dog back, you gotta pay for this too. So, more to follow on that, I will send you guys emails as soon as I get more information, what it's gonna take as far as like putting a kennel together. Pierce, uh, Chief Police Brett A. Strike said that he is absolutely hundred percent on board with it, just let him know what they need to do. Tyler Wells said the same thing, whatever we gotta do, because we just have no place to go. Don't have the manpower to take him to Lincoln, Norfolk even, he may, even to Sioux Land, or, uh, the Sioux Land Humane Society. We don't, we just don't have the manpower to do that, so we're kind of in a pickle. So, be patient with Andrew and I, please, if we say we don't have any place to take the dog, we just don't have any place to take the dog. I can't keep him, he can't keep him, and we're certainly not gonna jump him off on your guys' doorstep either, so. We're working it, we'll get, we'll get to that. Um, out of Safe Store, you saw the bricks coming down off the front of that. I actually got ahold of the general manager, his name is Sam Knupson or Koopson, um, has been out of country, he just got back to Atlanta today. Said that they have, his name is Dwayne, um, he will, when he gets back to Sioux Falls, if not tonight, tomorrow, he's gonna reach out to Dwayne, and I'm gonna have somebody come down and try to, you know, at least fix the front part of that store. I said, well, the whole thing is kind of in question, so give me a call when you get back, get settled. Um, we have a nuisance ordinance where we could condemn that building because it's not safe. And he said, please ask the mayor to give me a little time, we'll get out there, and we'll, we will have a discussion with it. So, he's gonna call me the first part of next week, I mean, it's bad, so.
I think every day more bricks fall down.
That whole thing could.
Yeah.
Fall down, yep, so, anyway, that's where we're at for that. Um, that's all I have, you guys have any questions for me? Anything?
Thanks for giving the work.
Oh, absolutely, I'm happy, I mean, it's gonna be a little, nothing, it's no more work than what I already have to do month, you know, to report to them, that's all they ask for, so.
So, Kristy, you guys still looking for a place around town, do they put in a, some kind of dog kennel?
Yes, um, I don't want something outside, because the dogs will bark, and then we'll get the dog barking calls. Um, I had talked with Jeremy a little bit, and he said maybe something inside the garage at the City Hall. There might be places we can put the kennels there. Um, they have to be controlled by temperature, so cold, they have to, they can't be in extreme cold, they can't be in extreme heat. I'm gonna go up and talk to Kyle regarding the community service hours with the kids, 'cause I think that would help them out too, getting those, uh, community hours Sunday, who doesn't wanna come play with the dogs, right? So, there's a little bit of legwork that is involved. However, I am gonna talk to the clinic in Pierce and see what they're gonna do with their kennels. If they're willing to come up with a few of them, maybe we won't have to worry about, you know, purchasing anything, you know, to house the dogs. And we're really only gonna need maybe a couple big ones and a couple small ones, really, 'cause we don't ever house that many, so. I mean, we'll just have to put our heads together and figure this out, but we gotta have something, I mean, you know, so.
Have you done any more on the shooter protocol?
Um, yes, I have given all the information to Bobby Rizer. I need to find out a good time for the other agencies to get together, it's, that's a matter of, you know, them looking at their calendars, and us being able to get together with the school to, to figure that out. Um, I still have to get a list.
Yeah, I got some new names, so.
Perfect, that, that'll work.
That'll be updated.
Hopefully, next month, um, Andrew and I signed us up for our LD fifty-one training that we have to have, are continuing it, so it's gonna be a one-day thing where we'll be able to get all of our, most of our training done, that, uh, our legislation, just the, basically, the, the education that we need to for continuing it, it'll be that one day. Next month, I can't remember, like, the fourteenth or something in March, I think, but, so, that, that's in the works, but, um, I'm trying to plan our school shooting, um, tabletop discussion after that, so that the other agencies can be part of it as well. And then the bank, Midwest Bank wants to be included, because they don't have any, they don't have any type of protocol if something were to happen with the bank. So, that's what I've got planned.
Good.
Okay, I gotta run, guys.
Economic Development Report, Susan.
Hello, everyone, I'm initiating my report for Friday, but we are capping, so doing this at night doesn't work, and I've been on the road a lot, so I will get this to you tonight, I'm gonna write in version eight. Um, on the housing, um, an update, so we are currently working on the Housing Trust Fund Grant, uh, with Loopy Properties. We, uh, conducted a market analysis and did a review of the Pierce County Housing Study. The original project proposal was, uh, four plaques with three bedrooms, two bath, two car, one car garage. The current proposal right now is two beds, one bath, one car garage, one housing suite. Um, it's a little bit smaller than what we kind of anticipated, but looking at what the market has demanded, um, and what the investors experienced, that's kind of what people are looking for. They're not looking for the big three-bedroom rentals, they're really just looking for those, that smaller footprint. Um, so that places the rent between nine sixty-four and eleven sixty-four, um, for the A-tron qualified units. The, in the non-qualified units, will actually probably fall in the same range, so, um, pre-application budget proposals are due March seventh, uh, the site location is due March twenty-first, and the full grant application is due May ninth. Uh, Five Rule Fanning will be the grant administrator on this project, and not Nina, who we've had in the past, so that's a little bit of a change. Um, a design project and budget meeting was held on January twenty-sixth. And then one thing that you're gonna see in the next two weeks is we'll be conducting a local market study. Um, it's just gonna help us beef up that grant narrative. It'll be a quick survey monkey, probably just six to ten questions. When you see that come out, please participate, share it with others. The more open comments and data that we can collect off of that, that supports the need, uh, for the additional rental units, um, and, you know, obviously, the structure that we're proposing. There will also be a picture of the proposed units on that housing, um, market survey. So you'll get to get a bit of a rendering and a foreplan of what that'll look like. Um, additional housing projects, so Community Capital Partners, they've been here several times. Um, the last time they were here, we visited eighteen sites. They did come back last Tuesday, and that was a, a meeting, or last Wednesday, it was a meeting with, um, all the city administrators and then representatives from Osmond. So, uh, we went through the process, what they're looking for, um, it'll pretty much be a six-month process. What you'll see here is they've identified a couple sites already, uh, or a site that they really like. Um, their goal is to start building two houses per year. If those houses sell really quick, they'll build potentially three or four the next time, it really kind of goes on market demand. Um, for you guys, you might be seeing, um, it's going to be TIF, and we go through the TIF process. Um, you're going to, uh, maybe see some zoning, maybe some lot splits, um, but those are some of the things that might be coming your way. Um, they'll walk us through all those processes, but six months from start until we start building homes. Um, the current site they're looking at is along the highway. Um, what they like about it is that it's already was slummin' blighted during our DTR process. Um, we're not sure if that's the best location for, uh, new homes, because you've got gravel on the east and west side. Um, but with the TIF, potentially help pay for that painting, or portion of that painting. Um, so we're still kind of exploring a little bit. I threw out addition, an additional site to them today, uh, that, you know, we thought would maybe be a little bit better, that already has infrastructure in place, we'll just kind of see what they come back with, but we're starting to get a lot of that, uh, movement on that project. Um, again, those homes are gonna be two seventy-five, thirteen hundred square feet, three bedroom, two bath, two car garage. They will have a full basement, but they won't be finished, the basement will be plumbed, so whoever buys that home can go ahead and finish that later. So that is the, um, the plan on that one. Um, on the housing study, we submitted our grant in December, and we're just still waiting to hear back from them, if we get, uh, a portion of that funded. Um, the study total is about eighteen thousand dollars. Um, we'll include a TIF plan in that, that'll allow us two TIF housing projects in the future, and then we'll include an Affordable Action Housing Plan. Um, so hopefully, they get back to us this month or next month, and let us know if we got that. On the childcare front, the Pierce County Court Team met in Plainview on January thirtieth. Um, this was to review the survey data that came back and the gap number for each community. Plainview's gap number, um, and this is the number of children under the age of six with two working parents in this community that do not have access to childcare is forty-eight. So, pretty significant number, of all of the communities in the county, we have the highest number by far. Um, this figure does not include the kids in the outlined area, it does not include rural, um, it doesn't include some of the kids in the surrounding area like Brunswick, you know, those, those areas that maybe feed into plenty of public schools, doesn't include them. So our number is probably higher, uh, than forty-eight. Um, we have been waiting for this data to justify the proposed childcare center, um, which was, you know, part of the community building, so now that we have this data, Jeremy and I have talked a couple times, and we feel that we can now move forward with that project. So the next step is, uh, Jeremy's going to, uh, contact the city engineer, look at that proposed foreplan that we have, see if any adjustments need to be made, uh, take that back to our local childcare committee. If it's all okay, then it's a site plan, developing that site plan, and then going, um, for the capital campaign. Uh, so, hopefully, those things happen here pretty quick. Um, one of the other things that's gonna be coming out of our C four K project is the Provider Gallery Walk, is set for February twenty-sixth. This is for all of the current providers in the county to come, we're gonna give them dinner, a gift, um, there's some activities. The Community for Kids Initiative puts this on, um, we're trying to capture their information, their data, their feedback, um, and what the barriers are to their success as childcare providers in the county, and what can we do to help them? Um, because part of this initiative, it did come with thirty thousand dollars of grant money, and we can do things and offer things for them, um, to help make their businesses work a little bit better. Uh, and then in March, we will be having that stakeholders dinner, where all of you will be invited, um, so all elected officials in the county and, uh, major employers will be invited to a dinner, um, we'll be talking about this initiative. We have some speakers lined up, um, that are going to talk about innovative ways that other communities have either partnered with schools and cities, schools and churches, uh, cities and churches, but innovative, innovative ways that public-private partnerships have worked to create cradle-to-cap initiatives, and that's six weeks to, uh, twelve years. And then the impact, the positive impact that that has had. Um, and we hope that with that and all the information that we've collected, we can actually move forward and start seeing some real projects come, uh, to fruition here across the county. Um, our hotel study, uh, last month, I, I kind of shoved it out to a couple developers and investors, and we do have an investor group that is now actively looking at that hotel study. By next month, I should, uh, have an idea of which hotel brand, uh, they are targeting, um, the site location, um, and what our steps forward might look like, so, um. And then our DTR project, uh, received an email, Courtney's been kind of communicating with Nina, and we got an email back today. Uh, so our contract ends in May, so we're, you know, hoping to get all of the business on the table and done by then. Uh, there won't be any extension beyond May. And then, uh, creative districts, uh, Bob and I met about this. We really need to come up with some creative ways to fund that project. Um, the CBPG block grants that are available through the state, um, are not doing, they're not necessarily doing street escapes anymore. Um, so we're looking for maybe murals, uh, planters, uh, things that beautify the downtown, and how do we fund those things? Um, I don't know what's left in Kino, uh, I think some LB eight forty can be used towards it, but we really need to get creative. Becoming a creative district, um, is something that the state came up with in order for us to access those funds. And at that time, it was two hundred thousand dollars was a grant you could get, and now they lowered it to ten thousand dollars. So for the amount of work you have to put in, um, to become a creative district with a ten thousand dollar grant, it really doesn't justify the work, um, in the creation of a new board, uh, a new Arts Council, and all the things that go with it, so. Um, most of you have access to the Downtown Revitalization Plan that was created by Confluence. Don't let me know when I'll send you the link, but all of the ideas that were crafted for what to do with the downtown to beautify it are in there. Um, we just need you guys to pick out some of the things that you really like, and then we can go from there. Any questions?
Did you see that email from Deborah?
Of I R P. Uh, we're probably looking at a thirty-day extension, um, the car wash, um, they're taking a little bit of time to get their loan application back to us, but most of everything is done. We also had a request from the bank, which is the other portion of that loan. They wanted us to wait, um, before we initiated our loan, because they ran into an issue with a different project in Norfolk, where the bank is always in the first security position, and that secondary lender ended up with all of the security and collateral, so they were a little gun shy, and they asked us to wait, and that is why there's a little bit of that delay.
So are you gonna get back to Oregon?
Yes, tomorrow, yeah.
City Superintendent Jeremy, anything?
Um, this, this, most of it, obviously, was moving out snow. Uh, we had a water leak break on, um, the focus and, uh, West Street, and that's actually poured back and open again, so. Fixing them that broken the cold, so, uh, we swept streets today and then, and we picked up and moved forward, so.
I drove through Pierce, coming home, I said, oh, they're sweeping their streets, how nice. We got to play in it, and I said, oh, they're sweeping their streets, how nice.
You didn't even complain on that.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. Thank you, Jeremy. City Attorney Report, Kylie, anything left on?
Yeah, uh, so I have a number of, uh, trust deeds and promissory notes regarding the downtown project, so I'll probably be, uh, getting those distributed, uh, to the folks to get them signed. Uh, we have the, the deed, and kind of, I guess, a transfer statement for, uh, the property right out here, so if we get that, I'll finish up. And then the, the last thing that I just want to note is, um, if we could enter Executive Session at some point to discuss Agenda I and number ten, I'd like to, uh, provide some individual advice regarding that. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, number five, Discussion, Daniel Library Report.
Yes, but I feel on the agenda since you had the report in your handout, if you have any questions or comments, or. Brother Daniel Report?
Well, I, you know, I'm a planning paper reader, and, and I think you should be, everybody who doesn't take the planning paper should be, have a dime on them. But are you on social media very much?
Facebook.
Facebook, yeah.
The library has Facebook.
Facebook, yeah, okay. And then, um, am I missing the library corner in the planning paper?
No, I haven't done library corner for a while.
Because we got some new books, and I think it's, I, anybody that reads a planning paper would like to know that, which kind of books there are. I think that's a good thing, keeps us.
Yeah, I used to put the new books in, but by the time it got in the paper, they were gone. I mean, people told me to check them out, and of course, they were gone, so I kind of quit doing that, but I'm just doing it again.
It just tells people that you're still innovative and getting new stuff for us.
Yeah.
So it's not a bad thing, stays in the public domain, I thought it was a good thing.
Yeah, I've been doing Facebook posts, but like you said, and not everybody's on Facebook, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, I can start doing that.
Are you surprised that the number overall is down, but you have, but you spent nine thousand grand and done a few dollars in books? Have any ideas, people just aren't reading as much, or?
Well, of course, the weather depends on the weather, and then people are doing Nebraska Overdrive now, on, online books.
Yeah, and you don't get any credit for that?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, that's in the accounts, but.
Okay, all right. And then I, I must have missed the rock painting thing.
Oh, the rock paint, those are some of reading, the rock paint is done by the library.
Pay more attention.
I don't know if Tammy had it, or it's on the paper, but it was on Facebook, but we'll try to do more on, in the papers, so people know.
Can you do that again in the summer, as the summer thing?
Yeah, it's still there.
It's still there.
Yeah, I think it's in the snow, yeah, I think it melted now, you can see it.
I'll go up, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else?
No.
Thanks, Autumn.
All right, you're always welcome to come to the library.
Number six, Mayor Appointment, Danny Van Goren added not two-nine twenty-two four to replace Lois Lutke through June thirty twenty-two four with Gail Celine. Our motion.
Motion to please Lois Lutke with Gail Celine.
Second.
I'll second.
All right. Tyler.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Number seven, Discussion, Action, Approval of Use of ACE Member Distribution Funds in a amount of five thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars.
So I'll explain how these funds come again every year, so the ACE Board chooses how much to distribute back, and then the calculation that we actually give back goes towards how much volume that the community, um, chooses to buy. So every time you choose ACE, it goes in towards our lump sum. Um, every time Bob and I go to a meeting, we get money towards our community, and, um, and then we do some projects, things for ACE. So this year, we got that money. Um, I, if you guys have anything, any idea where you want to go, uh, I will suggest that the ball backers would like to build a new, uh, bathroom between the ball fields and renovate their old ones for storage and more concessions. Um, they did apply for a grant through PBCF, they got, I think, two thousand dollars on that one. Uh, obviously, it's looking to be a twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar, uh, project. Um, we're gonna help them on it, obviously, with sewer and water and everything, but this will definitely go towards, uh, helping with material. Or you guys can choose anything else you want.
I don't know, I, I think it's a good project, a lot of people will get a lot of benefit out of that, so it can more, they, we can put towards that project unless somebody comes up with a better one.
You like it?
Yeah.
And I did talk to ball backers, and they were glad they'd said that.
Oh, really?
Bless you, okay, let's look for a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the use of ACE Membership Distribution Funds, five thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars for ball backers.
Second.
I'll second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Number eight, Discussion, Action, Approval to Advertise for Bids to Hay Lagoon and Transportation.
I'm seeing you put this out for bids every year, unless you guys don't feel the need for it, um, it's done, done well for, we, we owe taxes on it, so.
Makes it look nice.
Yeah, it does, it's nice to have a hay, and it's nice to have, it feels, not need, so. Make a motion to approve to advertise for bids to Hay Lagoon and Transportation.
Okay, second.
Second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Number nine, Discussion, Action, Resolution Number six-nine-five, Approval of Purchase of Twenty Twenty Four Dodge Durango in a amount of forty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars, which is our new police car.
Um, obviously purchases, uh, we just needed to say where we're gonna come from, we first talked about a loan, but I think what we got going on in the trades that will just take it out of our general soul, and we can, we have that ability to do so, so.
I make a motion to pass Resolution six-nine-five, Approval of Purchase of the Twenty Twenty Four Dodge Durango, forty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars. Second. I'll second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Number ten, Tyler, you wanna skip that, or you wanna go through that and then come back?
We can skip it.
Okay, all right, we're going to number eleven then. Discussion, Ordinance Number nine-nine-five, Consolidation of Park and Pool Boards.
Um, so this is something that Bob and I have been talking about, yeah, if you actually read what currently the, the pool board is in charge of, it's, it's a lot to ask volunteers to handle the money, go out and find insurance, they, they don't actually go do those things, so we wouldn't expect that from a volunteer board to do those things. Um, so we wanted to simplify it, Bob and I talked about it, and, um, we had Kyle look into it, actually, this is the first one I just seen it too. And this is just discussion, um, just to talk about it, we'd like to consolidate it to one board, and, um, and give them more of a, a recommendation committee, kind of like our, our other ones do, so like there's some board and everything, so. Um, we don't feel like it's fair to ask people to have to take their volunteer time out and run up there and try to manage something and taking the money and insurance, so. I agree. They still will give recommendations to the council about hiring, and, and if we have any major policy things, we'll obviously talk to them about it, but, uh, the main directives will be gone, so.
Discussion, we need to do actions, or are we?
No, we just, just discussion this time, um, Kyle's brought to us, this will be you guys a month to take a look at it. Um, any changes, if the pool board wants to look at it, or Park Board thinks any of these change, if they call ya, um, we'll bring it forward next month, so.
Okay, number twelve, Discussion, Action, Resolution Number six-nine-six, City of Plainview Residential and Commercial Trash Rate.
So these are the rates that we specified for the last two months, so they're in there, and I'm following behind on my numbers. Um, so residential, that we just talked about, um, went up three dollars, um, the dumpsters went up ten, the big dumpsters and the small dumpsters went up five, so that's, that's what we proposed for the last two meetings, and, and you know what? I think you asked it to the total number of income, and I can not get you that. I'm gonna write that down, I'm telling. I'm gonna write that down on top of.
Yeah, I think I did, didn't I?
You, you forgot to.
Yeah, I forgot.
Honey man, you're a bonus.
We're here early, we're down.
I'm on time.
Um, these are obviously already budgeted for, as we planned, moving forward all year long, so.
Cause the transfer station, then they just keep adding more to it, so unfortunately, it's, it comes down to money.
Oh, we got motion to pass, resolution six-nine-six.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, Tyler.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
May. Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Would you have the thirteen council comments? Council having comments?
Thank you for including the class. I think that'll be interesting to watch that. I don't think it's a bad, it'll be interesting with that. And then I talked to Jeremy earlier in the paper, it says we got twenty thousand, fifty dollars for that tire mold, but the city doesn't know about it yet, so.
Well, we were, we were told we were gonna get it, and then I got calls back in December saying we might not get it cause we purchased it, um, early, which we needed to, cause the, the park was coming up, I mean, on the bottom. But they said you could always reply in June, and you'd be first on their list to distribute funds, cause you can apply for past projects too. And, um, I talked about three different people from, from there, so I don't know, maybe they decided they've already distributed, and they're gonna give it to us anyway. Um, I may have to make a phone call, cause I didn't realize that, that they announced that, so we may still get it anyway. I'm assuming they've already appropriated it, and they don't wanna have to hold on to it and reobligate it, so, um, but I will make that phone call. So, to who, I don't know which one that.
Did you find out why it was three hundred and forty-five dollars for electricity with concessions standing last week?
No, I did not, yeah, no.
Anything else? Number fourteen, public comments. Anyone from the public like to make a comment?
Hi, I'm here representing the manor tonight. Um, seems like there's been a few questions on some things, so I'm gonna kind of go over a little bit here. Um, I'm not sure how familiar you all are with some of the workings of the manor, so I'm just gonna go through a few things. First of all, this manor's in the block, and they've been in the block for a good many years. That's something that doesn't quite just happen, so. I don't know if you're aware or not, but, um, in the last five years, there have been sixty-two nursing homes and assisted living facilities that have closed in the state of Nebraska. Fifty-five of them are outside of Douglas and Starbury County, which is, that would kind of be us. Last year, we were second in the nation in closures. Texas was number one, and we were number two. That's a lot. I don't know if you're aware or not, either Stanton is a city-owned nursing home. Last year, they were over a million dollars in the hole. That's not us. We're pretty solvent right now here. Hospitals are struggling financially, um, a lot of things are going on. Medicare's not reimbursing, inflation. It's, it's tough. We are very fortunate. We don't have that issue to go through. Um, another thing, I don't know if you're li- aware or not either, um, I just got online and looked at some things, some different listings, care listings dot com gave Plainview Manor an overall rating of five. Medicare dot gov gave us a much above average five-star rating. Uh, US World News and Health, I think you've probably heard of that before. Last year, there were a hundred and eighty-nine nursing homes in Nebraska. Of these, eleven of these received a five out of five. We are one of them. Uh, stuff doesn't just happen. It happens by doing the right thing over and over and over, every single day. Um, one of the things we deal with is state fire marshal comes in and surveys us. The state inspectors come in. We wanna make sure that we are giving top-of-the-line service, that, that we are as safe as we can be, that we're doing everything right. Um, this last summer, there was a nursing home in Sioux City that I think had about thirty tags, and they ended up closing it. There was a hundred and, hundred and some beds in that place, so that's a lot of people that are displaced that have had to go someplace because it wasn't safe within there. Um, Julink is frustrated. We even have a couple, a couple of deficiencies. Um, this last year, we had one tag, one. The Nebraska tag average is seven point four. The United States tag average is eight point eight. We're hitting the mark on that. Okay, we are safe up there, and that doesn't, that doesn't just happen. That's a tough thing to go, go on. The biggest thing that we probably deal with is staff shortages. Um, hospitals can't even discharge people because there are no places for them to go. Uh, the, let's see here. Methodist operates a nursing home with a hundred and six beds in Fremont that's attached to the hospital, but today they're at seventy-one beds, cause that's all they can staff. Um, we have some friends here in Plainview who, him and his wife just told us they had a medical condition, and they were told to Plainview, put in Norfolk, pitch in. Norfolk would not take them. They were told then to go to Sioux City to the emergency room. That's how they got taken care of. Um, I don't know if you've watched the ads in the Norfolk shopper at all, uh, as far as healthcare ads and stuff like that. Eight ads, thirty-one positions, eleven ads, forty-eight positions, six ads, thirty-two positions, ten ads, forty positions, thirteen ads, thirty-three positions, eight ads, twenty-six positions. This is the biggest problem we have, over and over again. Um, I know, I know some people even have some questions on the bonuses. Well, I'm gonna tell you, if you're managing fifty-some people, a million-dollar businesses, you're gonna get a bonus. When Randy graduated from college, first job out, he had a bonus, and he had a bonus every year till he retired. My son, in his job, there were bonuses. My sister worked at Affiliated Foods for a lot of years, bonus there. She works at Norfolk Iron Metal. They get quarterly bonuses. A lot of jobs have bonuses. I didn't ever had a job that had a bonus, but I knew if I wanted a bonus, I was perfectly capable of going out and getting that kind of job. That's just the way it is. Um, the many positives our manor have don't just happen overnight. They happen from consistently doing the right thing over and over and over again. Jolene and her staff work their tails off to give the very best care to our residents. That has always been their prime objective, and it is their passion. All the decisions that are made up there are geared towards that objective. We've not always agreed on everything. But I've never once doubted how much she cares for our residents. When COVID hit, we saw that firsthand. And honestly, at that time, if you had any idea of healthcare, it was awful. It would have been a lot easier for her to have left at that time and just said, I'm done. And if she had left, I don't think we would have had a, had a nursing home. I don't think we would have been able to find somebody to come in here and do what she did. As it was, her and her staff, they buckled down and they stayed together. And when you think about the financial stability that this manor brings to our town, you better have somebody in charge that can handle that. It's always easy for all of us, myself included, to look at things from the outside and think that we understand the issues and have all the answers. I have learned from past experience, so it's a lot better to walk in those shoes. You know, sometimes it's easy to make decisions from that outside stuff, but come up to the manor, see what it's like for a day, walk in those shoes. It's not easy. It is tough, you know, um, been successful for a lot of years, that means something that's being done right. Do we do everything perfect? No. Um, if you have any questions or anything, you gotta ask them, okay?
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else, public comments? With that, we'll be going to number, let's do number fifteen first. Discussion, possible motion to enter into executive session to discuss prospective manor administrator employment agreement.
I'll make a motion to adjutant to executive session to discuss prospective manor administrator employment.
Second.
Second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.